Hi, everybody. This is our review session for the final exam. And I'm grateful for those of you who did come today to make it to the review session. And I want to open up the floor with whatever you want us to get started on, any questions that you have about that. We have a final exam study guide. I also want to remind you what the final exam is. The final exam is on Wednesday. That's May 6th. From, I think it's from 12 until 2 in this classroom. And Mark, you'll be able to make that time I'm asking. So I'm thinking that people who are AY majors from kind of do student teachings will be free, but if not, please let me know.
Yeah, there are some of them who have to make up some days. But I got my answer, so I'm probably good.
Okay. All right, so let us go ahead and open up the floor to any questions you might have. And when we run out of questions, I was thinking I would go over proofs. Yes, ma'am?
Can you take the last one and show your...
I will.
For a final exam?
Yes. Can I prove the last one for the study guide? I sure can. I was planning on doing all of them. So we'll eventually get to it, if it's okay. Anybody else want to ask me? Yes.
Is there another final one here at two?
I don't think so.
I'm asking just in case you might need one or two.
For 20 or 30 more minutes, I'm okay with that. Yeah. Hour. I don't think there's anything that's going to block us. I suspect strongly that nothing, no other final exam is going to be going on Monday in this classroom. So if you want to stay a little longer, that's okay.
Wednesday?
Wednesday. Wednesday, I said the wrong thing. Wednesday!
I don't care about Monday.
Yeah. On Wednesday. Myself included. Who would not be taking a class on Monday? Anybody else with a question? Well, I think that we did the squeeze theorem on our last regular day of class. And I think we got through the, did we get through the Cauchy convergence theorem? Yes, I kind of went through it very rapidly. And so what I want to do is make sure to get through the last four statements that I said I would definitely ask four out of six about. And so the next one is the monotone convergence theorem. I think that's where we are. Okay, so here's the monotone convergence theorem. If I ask you to prove it, I will also ask you to state it. And for some of you on test two, not everybody got the same exam, you were asked to state this. Some people were asked to say this. So what is the monotone convergence theorem? Here's what it says. It says a monotone sequence of real numbers. Is convergent if and only, excuse me, it is bounded. And then there's a moreover. So if you won't include that, it's okay. The proof indicates this. So moreover, you know, X sub n is a bounded increasing sequence. Then X sub n converges to the supremum of the set of X sub n. If, that's kind of case one. But if X sub n is a bounded decreasing sequence, X sub n converges to the infimum of all the X sub n's. I can now prove this. Well, first thing I notice is that it's an if and only statement. Well, that's in case of being a proof. So the setup for the proof is we're going to let X sub n be monotone, be a monotone Okay. It's an if and only statement. So the first thing I'm going to do is the forward direction. And that is to show we're going to let X sub n be convergent. And what we want to show, we want to explain why X sub n is bounded. But wait a minute. Every convergent sequence, forget this model, every convergent sequence is bounded. Right. We proved that. So what I would say, Megan, or our proof who had asked me this, was you know? So by a previous, by a previous theorem, since X sub n is convergent, then X sub n is bounded. So Megan, we don't have to prove that part. We can just refer back to the theorem we did that second. So that's good. That's easy. In the other direction, we're going to suppose that X sub n is bounded. We want to show X sub n is convergent. Okay, so that's where we are. And so we're assuming in the purpose for everything, both directions, that X sub n is monotone. Okay. Well, that monotone phrase captures two different settings. And so that's going to have us break our proof down into two cases. So since X sub n is monotone, then we have two cases facing that. Mark, if you're monotone, that means you are either increasing or decreasing. That's one. That's one of our two cases. Okay. So here's case one. We're just going to start. Okay, so if we have an increasing and we know that it's bounded, then since X sub n is bounded, then, to be bounded means that there's some m that the absolute value of X sub n is less than or equal to m is greater than or equal to zero. And that's true for all n in the natural number range. So that means there's something bigger than all the X sub n's and there's something less than all the X sub n's. Then there exists, so if it's bounded, it's bounded above. And so there exists a supremum of X sub n. Say, let's call it X superscript star. Then what we're going to do is show that X sub n converges to that. Since X superscript star is equal to the sup of the X sub n's. That means that, well, I guess, I guess I should back it just for one second. I made a preemptive move that I went too fast. Look, if I wanted to show that the X sub n's converge to this X superscript star, I'm going to do that using the definition of what it means for a sequence to converge. What's the very first thing we'll say? Thank you. I know for those of us who are very confident women, it's boring because we say it all. We let that sum be greater than zero again. What are we looking for? Okay. Yeah, that's right. We need the k. I'm going to add the numbers. Such that for all n bigger than or equal to k, then X sub n minus X superscript star, that'll be less than or equal to. So that's one. Thank you. Okay, well, here's what I will tell you. Let us note that since X superscript star is equal to the sup of the X sub n's. What is the sup? The sup is something that's bigger than or equal to every one of the X sub n's. And if you give me any other upper bound, the sup is smaller than any other one. So the sup is less than or equal to all upper bounds. Okay, that's what we have. This means it's the least upper bound. It's the smallest thing that's an upper bound. It's the smallest thing that's an upper bound. So if you go a little smaller, it's not in upper bound. So note, at X superscript star minus epsilon, that's less than X superscript star. So here's my supremum, I gave you something smaller than it. So that means this X superscript star minus epsilon is not an upper bound. The X sub n, what does it mean for it not to be upper bound? That means that there's a term of the sequence that is...
Bigger.
Bigger or more? Okay. So to indicate that there's a term in the sequence that's bigger than X superscript star minus epsilon, we'll say there's a k. So there exists a k, element of natural numbers, such that X sub k is bigger than X star minus Really, I'm going to rewrite this. So I'm going to say X star minus epsilon is less than X sub k. But wait a minute. What do I know about X sub k and its relationship? Well, I'll just say, I'll say since, since X sub n is an increasing sequence, then for all n bigger than or equal to k, X star minus epsilon will be less than X sub n. Because, look, if you're further along in the sequence than the k spot, you got bigger or equal to X sub k. Is that okay? That's what we have. But wait a minute. Every term of the sequence is less than or equal to X star. Yeah, the X superscript star. Because X superscript star is the supremum. It's an upper bound. So we have this. But this is less than X superscript star plus epsilon. So for all n bigger than or equal to k, we have, so if I just look at certain parts of this inequality, X superscript star minus epsilon is less than X sub n, which is less than X superscript star plus epsilon. Now, if I subtract X superscript star from all parts, we have minus epsilon is less than X sub n minus X star, which is less than epsilon. And the reason I did that was so that I could end up saying something for all n greater than or equal to k about an absolute value. So here's what I could say. We have, that's the value of X sub n minus X star is less than epsilon. Well, look, that's what it takes to show that the X sub n's converge to X superscript star. That's part of the proof. So I'm going to stop for a second to kind of summarize what happened. The monotone convergence theorem, we're not done. Monotone convergence theorem is an if and only statement. The forward direction we proved in another, they just need to state that in a nice way. Then the backwards direction is going to break down into two cases, whether X sub n is increasing and bounded, or X sub n, which we haven't handled yet, is decreasing and bounded. The X sub n increasing and bounded, we just did. The X sub n decreasing and bounded works analogically, which is very similar. I'm going to do the same steps, or similar steps to what I just did. Wait just a second, sorry. Let me get some space here. So when I'm thinking about, oh, how am I going to do this? Really, one direction, the forward direction is nothing. We've already proven. Then the backwards direction has two parts and they're essentially the same. So once I know one of them, I got it. So I'm thinking there's three parts. Once I know one of the parts, I got it. That's what I'm thinking. So I'm not thinking it's difficult. Yes, ma'am?
So since we're saying over here that increasing and bounded...
Yes.
Then the, um, the conclusion of this, do we need to talk about the completeness property?
It's because of the completeness property. So if you say that's the reason, that's a good thing to say.
But we don't need to say that.
No. Yeah. It's a good thing to say. That's the reason I could say it. It's because of the completeness property. Now here, that's case two. Suppose X sub n is decreasing and bounded. It is an analogous statement to the completeness property. We could say supremum, or the infimum of the X sub n's. That's right. Call it, I'm going to call it X sub script star. And what am I going to do? I'm going to show that the X sub n's in this case converge to X sub script star. How do I do that? Well, I would use the definition of convergence. So Megan, what's the next example right? What do I need? That's right. We need to get it. That's a spot in the sequence. So I said from that spot on, that's all we need to bring in the new category. We have that the distance which has a value of X sub n minus X sub script star will be less than the positive numbers. Okay. Now we go to start working with the definition of what it means to be the infimum. And you can kind of look over here where we are. Okay? So now we head for the supremum over here. Now we're going to say, hey, since X sub script star equals to the infimum of X sub n's. What does that mean? That means that X sub script star is the greatest lower bound. So it's the biggest thing that's a lower bound. Is that okay? So if you, it's the biggest, this is the biggest thing that's a lower bound. Meaning if you give me something bigger, it's not a...
Upper bound.
Lower bound. Yeah. All right. So here, note, X sub script star plus epsilon is greater than X sub script star. So X sub script star plus epsilon is not an upper bound for the sequence, the terms of the sequence. So what's that mean for it not to be an upper bound? Uh, well, I mean, not to be, oh, gosh. I'm sorry. Not to be sorry about, lower bound. A lower bound. So what does it mean for X sub script star plus epsilon to not be a lower bound? It's not lower bound. That means that there must be something in the sequence that is...
Smaller than it.
Smaller than it. So there exists a k, element of the natural numbers, such that X sub k is less than X Okay. Since X sub n in this case is decreasing, and if you push further along, so for all n greater than or equal to k, then k, they got smaller, does that make sense? So X sub n will be less than X sub script star plus epsilon. But wait. What do I know that's smaller than all the X sub n's? Let me push this a little forward. So we have... What's smaller than all the X sub n's?
X superscript, or X sub, sorry.
Is that okay?
Should it be less than or equal to?
Here it should be less than or equal to.
Yes, it should.
But that is going to be less than X sub star minus epsilon. That's right, Adam. It's good. Okay, so for all such periods, for all n greater than or equal to k, here's what we have. We have X sub star minus epsilon is less than X sub n, which is less than X sub star plus epsilon. And so now, for all n bigger than or equal to k, if I subtract X sub script star from all three parts, we get minus epsilon is less than X sub n minus X sub script star, which is less than epsilon. So for all n bigger than or equal to k, I can make a inequality involving absolute values. I have the absolute value of X sub n minus X sub script star is less than epsilon. What does that mean? That means that the limit as n goes to infinity of X sub, uh, X sub n is equal to X sub script star. And that's what we wanted to show. And that's it. Go back to what? Give everybody a sec, make sure we're okay. I want to tell you something that I hope is helpful. For me, as I already said, this proof has three parts. The first reason, the last two are the same, are analogous to each other. So once I line mine up, I got them. That's the way I think. So out of this proof, I'm thinking, I got to know what it says, and then I just got to remember one either of these cases that I can get the other from. Once I write down one of the cases, I just use it. I have it in front of me. I just use it to do the other case. Anybody with any questions about what we did? Well, the next one I'm going to go over is the sequential criteria for function limits. So what did it say? First of all, it talks about function limits. So I'm going to do the preparatory statements involved. We talk about functions and limits. So I'm going to start by saying that A is a subset of R, F be a function that goes from A to R, and C be an element of A. No. C be A.
A circle.
What are the statements? Well, the first one has to do with limits. And Adam, the name tells me A has got something to do with limits. That helps me. I remember that. And so Megan, it says, one, the limit is X goes to C of F of X equals to L. And Mark, second statement is that if X sub n is some sequence, well, what's so special about the sequence? Well, it's got three parts. Number one, it's in A. Number two, none of its terms are equal to C. None of its terms are C. So what we write, the way we write that is that X sub n is different from C for all n elements of natural numbers. And thirdly, the limit as n goes to infinity of X sub n has to be the same. Then, this is a midfin statement. Then that forces F of X sub n to converge to converge to L. That's a statement. So now we need proof. Well, its two statements are equivalent, so we're gonna do the preface in part for the proof, and then, really, for two statements to be, uh, to be equivalent, it's an if-then only statement, we wanna have a backwards direction in order. Okay, so proof, we got the preface in part, it's really not that important, but we need to write it down to be formal. So here we want that, A go from, or A be a subset of R, F go from A to R, and C be a subset of. Alright. We've got a forward and a backwards direction. Here's the forward direction. We're gonna let the limit as X goes to C of F of X equals to L. We wanna show the second part, so we're assuming the first, and we'll show the second. How do I do this? So, what we're gonna do is we're going to show the second was true. What's the second system? Anytime you give me sequences from A, none of its terms are C, but yet it converges to C, that's gonna, uh, force F of that sequence to converge to L, okay? So I gotta put myself in a position to prove that second part from what we're assuming. That is, I gotta assume it's hypothesis of that if-then statement, so we're gonna let X of N be a subset of A, with X of N being different from C for all N elements of natural numbers, and the limit as N goes to infinity of X of N, we're gonna have that be equal to C. What do we wanna show? We wanna show that the limit as N goes to infinity of F of X of N equals to L. Yes, Megan?
Is it okay if we use that as the definition of our proof? Or do you want us to say in the, in the statement that it converges to L?
Uh, you could say either one, this means the same.
Okay.
Means the same. Okay. How do I show a sequence converges to a number? Well, we use the, one thing, we use the definition. So what's it say? It says, let epsilon be greater than or equal to zero. What do we need? We need a K, element of natural numbers, such that for all N greater than or equal to K, that absolute value of F of X of N, minus L, is less than epsilon, that's what I want. Okay. So we're looking for this, uh, this K, that's what we're looking for. Well, uh, what do we know? We know the limit as N goes, I'm sorry, as X goes to C of F of X equals to L. And we've been given an epsilon. So, uh, since that happens, then there exists a delta bigger than zero, such that for all X elements of A, with right, zero less than absolute value of X minus C is less than
Delta.
Delta, then what happens?
Absolute value of X minus L plus epsilon.
That's what we have, that's just the definition of the limit of a function. So what it says is, as long as the input values are close enough to C, and the delta units, but not necessarily equal to C. Then, the output values of those input values will be within epsilon units of L. What am I trying to show? I'm trying to show that the F of X of Ns are within epsilon units of L, the F of X of Ns. To, for, for what I know, I can make that F of X of Ns be within epsilon units of L, provided that the X of Ns are within delta units of C and not equal to C. C. This absolute value of X minus C being greater than zero means that X can't be C, because if X were C, Mark, C minus C is?
Zero.
And zero isn't bigger than zero. So that's, that's how we eliminate X being within C. Well, how am I gonna make the X of Ns? I just got Xs, I'm just saying if the Xs are close enough to C. How can I make the X of Ns be closer to C? What do I know about the X of Ns? They converge to C. So since X of Ns converge to C, there exists uh, a K, element of natural numbers, such that for all N greater than or equal to K, the, uh, X of Ns minus C will be less than whatever I want. What do I want? Delta. Because if the input values are within delta units of C, uh, then the output values will be within epsilon units of L. Uh, but wait, you may say, well, how do I know this part is being satisfied? Well, we know that the X of Ns are always different than C. Right. So, or since the X of Ns are different from C, and what else we've written here? Then, for all N bigger than or equal to K, the absolute value of F of X of N minus L will be less than epsilon. So the X of Ns fit this category right here, they fit this category right here, so their output values fit this category. And that's what we're saying. And so, the limit as N goes to infinity of F of X of N equals to L. That's half the proof. There was a big boxing match last night. You paid ninety dollars, you could see.
Can't believe they charged that much.
Yes. Did, did you have
Were my friends had a smoke room.
I, I didn't see any of it, but I'm gonna tell you something, I'm gonna spend two minutes. I, I like boxing, it's fine, I like these things. What kind of sport is it that the goal of a sport is to incapacitate another person by hitting him? I said, one comes on late at night. That's my answer to it. That's what kind of sport it is, it comes on late at night. So, um, anyway, I, I've gone to see boxing matches before, or go to places where I could view them on TV. And they're fine for me, if some people don't like them, okay, whatever, people think, that's their business. Um, but I will tell you, I, I voted for somebody in the boxing match. Me and Sam was friends, and I, it doesn't matter. But I voted for Mayweather. And I think I told you that I am, uh, I, I don't think I have very many isms. But I do have something that I discriminate against. I, I'm a regionalism. That's what I am. I like people from Malavon, he's not from Malavon. He's from the US. So that's why I voted for him, not that there's anything wrong with voting for somebody from a different country, I was born in Greece. I'm not saying, my mom's a Greek, she immigrated to this country, I'm not saying anything back. Okay. That's what I think. So I voted for him. I don't think there's anything wrong with the other fellow. Matter of fact, I think the other fellow's a really nice person, from what I hear about him. He's, uh, like in the government there. I think he takes a, a lot of pride in what he does. And I like him just fine. As a matter of fact, I think the guy that was American's a little smarter. There's lots of reason to be bothered by him. But it wouldn't enough for me to be bothered by him. That's what I voted for. And it was kinda clear, I think, for most people, that he was supposed to be the better officer of this, this place. And I still like the other fellow too. Do you imagine up with that? Here, we wanna go this direction. How do we show this direction? I don't have anything to get somebody from another country, I'm from another country. Okay, I wouldn't vote in this country, so nobody get anything, you know, upset. Yeah, that's not what I did. So, in another direction, we, we show two implies one by showing the contrapositive. That is, we will show that not one implies not two. What does that mean? That is, we will assume that the limit as X goes to C of F of X doesn't equal L. And we gotta show not two. You know, I said I voted for one over another, who cares? I just come to store. Okay, I'm gonna show not two. What was not two? What was two? Two was, that if you give me something in A that's a sequence, none of its terms are C, but the limit of X of N converges to C, then that's gonna force F of that sequence to converge to L. That's what two said. What's the opposite of that? What's showing that integral? Well, you still have to get the first part to be accurate for the statement to apply. So we still, we want to produce a sequence in A. None of its terms are C, and that sequence converges to C, but F of that sequence does not converge to L. Write that down. So to prove not two, we want to produce a sequence X of N, it's a subset of A, with X of N being different from C, and, uh, the limit as N goes to infinity of X of N equals C. But, F of X of N does not converge to L. Okay, alright. So how are we gonna do this? Well, the way we're gonna produce this X of N is, is based on the fact that the limit as X goes to C of F of X is different from L. So since the limit as X goes to C of F of X is different from L, then, uh, the opposite of the definition of convergence for this limit, hold, the opposite. So what's the opposite? Opposite is, there exists, instead of for all epsilon greater than, there exists an epsilon not greater than zero, such that for all delta bigger than zero, there exists an X sub delta, element of A, with zero less than X sub delta minus C less than epsilon, but absolute value of X sub delta minus L is gonna be greater than or equal to epsilon naught. Yes, it should be delta here. Made a mistake, thank you very much. So, without having been said, uh, we consider the deltas of the form either one or any one.
Pre gen, right?
Yes. That's right. Pre gen, element of natural numbers. So, there exists, well, an X of one, element of A, with zero less than X of one minus C less than, uh, one over one, but F of X of one minus L inside F of A is greater than or equal to epsilon naught. Also, there's gonna exist an X of two, element of A, with zero less than X of two minus C, is less than one half, but F of X of N, or F of X of two minus L is greater than or equal to epsilon naught. We continue this process where in general, what do we have? We have an X of N. So in general, we continue this process, let me see what I read. In general, to obtain an X of N, element of A, with uh, zero less than absolute value of X of N minus C is less than one over N, but F of X of N inside F of A minus L is bigger than or equal to epsilon naught. So what we've done, so we have all the sequences. Just continue this process forever. So, uh, sequences are X of N. And what do I know about? Each one of them is in A, so the collection of X of Ns are a subset of A. And because, Mark, of this part, what I'm putting my hand over, that zero is less than absolute value of X of N minus C, I know for each X of N, they are
Different from two.
That's what I want. For all N elements of natural numbers. And because the absolute value of X minus, uh, X of N minus C is less than one over N, because that happens, that, Mark, uh, that forces the limit as N goes to, uh, infinity of X of N to be equal to C. But, this part right here, that the F of X of N minus L stays some distance away, uh, are bigger than or equal to epsilon naught, that means the F of X of N stays some distance away from L. That means that the F of X of Ns, what about them as a sequence?
Don't converge to L.
That's right.
Don't converge to L.
So I've done what I set out to do. I've shown that not two shows not one. I'm sorry, not one shows not two. And that proves that other direction. So for me, in this theorem, I have to remember the statement, the forward direction goes from the definitions, the backwards direction we prove by proving the contrapositive. That's what I do. That's what I remember, and I just follow that blueprint. Anybody with any questions about that? Anybody with any questions about that? The next one is very similar. Let's look at it. At least in its statement. So the statement is the sequential criterion for continuity. Okay, now we're talking about something relating sequences and continuity. That's what the statement says in its name. Okay, so what is, well, I probably got set up here. Need to describe what we're talking about. We let A be a subset of R. F goes from A to R. And c be a cluster point of A.
No.
And c c what? That's right. Then we say f is continuous at c, then there's a word, a small word. If and only if. Yeah, that's why I say for each. Each what, jump? Sequence in A. With what? With the limit as n goes to infinity of x of n equals c. Then f of x of n converges to f of c. Right. So, Audra, before I move the camera here, this statement is similar to the other statement. There are some things. First of all, we're talking about continuity, so we're not talking about cluster point. And the second thing, we're talking about continuous to c. And what we say in this statement is that x of n's subset of A and the limit of x of n to c. We don't say that x of n has to be different from c, that's it. And then f of x of n converges to f of c as opposed to the function limits. F of x of n's converges to l. That's it. But they're still very similar. Excuse me. Yes, you sure can. Yes, man. Means the same thing. So here's the proof. It's an if and only if statement, so I might backwards and forwards. So here, we're gonna let F be a subset of R. F go from A to R. And c be an element of A. So from the forward direction, we're gonna let f be continuous at c. What we wanna show is that any time you give me some sequence in A that converges to c, then f of that sequence must converge to f of c. That's what I gotta show. So we gotta put ourselves in a position where I can prove this thing. So we're gonna let, we're gonna let x of n be a sequence in A. Who's limited to c? What are we gonna show, Megan? Can you say again, one more time, we wanna show what, the limit? That's right. That is what we wanna show. That's right. So how am I gonna show the, uh, this sequence right here? This is a sequence, converges to this number. I'm gonna tell you, so how do you know this is a number? Well, c's in the domain, it's in A. So f graphs it, sends it to something. So this is a number. Is that okay? If c's a cluster point, we don't even know if it's in the domain. So f may not even pick it up and send it somewhere. Well, how do I show that a sequence converges to a number? Well, we let yeah. What do we need? Well, we need a, A, this is a natural number. Subset for all n bigger than or equal to k, the absolute value of f of x of n minus f of c will be less than epsilon. That's what won't happen. Now I wanna have something, only one thing to help me prove this. And that is, well, a couple things. One of the things I have is that f is continuous to c. So that's what I'm gonna use. So I've been given an epsilon, so since f is continuous to c, the most basic thing I can say about this involves the definition of continuity to c. And that is right. So in some sense, even though the proof here takes lots, or takes several steps, the steps are the most basic steps to tackle this part. Is that okay? So I'm gonna use the definition. What do I know? I've been given an epsilon, and I know f is continuous to c, so there exists a delta, greater than zero. I'm using the definition of continuity to c. Such that for all x element of A with zero less than x minus c, come on, somebody.
Good, no.
With x minus c being less than delta, then absolute value of f of x minus f of c will be less than epsilon. Now, look, I've got that the output values are within epsilon distance of f of c. As long as the input values, this is a c now, are within delta units of c. Is that okay? Good luck. Well, I wanna show these output values are within epsilon units of c. So all I have to do is show these input values are within delta units of c. That's what I gotta do. Well, how do I know that's gonna happen? Well, I know that's gonna happen if those x of n's converge to c. That's very similar to what we did for the sequential criterion for function limits. So the first part's very similar, very analogous. So kind of, you know, one of them, you get both. And I wanna tell everybody this. A lot of mathematics is like that. We learn something that works in a certain situation, and it turns out it works in more than one situation. So we use it again. Okay. So since the limit as n goes to infinity of x of n equals c, there exists a k. Remember, what I'm looking for, I'm looking for a k. Here's one, this is a natural number, subset for all n bigger than or equal to k, absolute value of x of n minus c will be less than delta. You know, we normally say epsilon, but really, we want delta. We want the input values to be within delta units of c. So for all n bigger than or equal to k, we have we have this happening, which forces that f of x of n minus f of c inside f of A will be less than epsilon. So the limit as n goes to infinity of f of x of n is equal to f of c. Now we gotta prove the other direction. The other direction we prove in cases. So here, we first of all assume suppose that for each x of n is a subset of A with the limit as n goes to infinity of x of n equals c. Suppose that that happens, then f of x of n converges to f of c. What do we wanna show? We want to show f is that's right. Can you say a little louder? Can't say it anymore? We wanna show f is continuous to c. Okay. Well, we're breaking into cases. So case one. Here, c, we know it's in A, but if it is not a cluster point of A, then automatically, f is continuous. I'll say automatically. At c. So that's something we've proven. That if you give me a non-cluster point in the domain, the function's already continuous at it. Cause there's nothing close to it besides c itself. Case two. There's nothing close to it except c. In A. Here, c is a cluster point of A. Then, the way that we can show f is continuous at c by showing or by using Can you guys not understand? By using what? What previous fact? Yes. By proving the limit as x goes to c of f of x equals to f of c. Okay. So if I can prove this, this is good enough. How can I prove this? Well, so if you, the way I'm gonna prove this is using the sequential criterion for function limits. I'm gonna let x of n be a subset of A, it's a sequence in A, with x of n being different from c for all n element of A, and the limit as n goes to infinity of x of n equals c. All right, now look, what are we assuming in this direction? Say that again. For all n element of A, is that right?
No.
For all n element of A, that's enough. Thank you very much, Audra. Thank you very much, Audra. What are we assuming? We're assuming that no, any time that you give me a sequence this in A that converges to c, then f of that sequence converges to f of c. Well, I'm giving you a sequence, this in A, that converges to c. Who cares if this is happening for our hypothesis over here? It really doesn't affect you. Okay? Thus, by assumptions, thus by our hypothesis. The limit as n goes to infinity of f of x of n equals to f of c. Thus, by the sequential criterion for function limits, the limit as n goes to infinity of, no, limit as x goes to c of f of x equals to f of c. Since c was a cluster point, this last fact, the last thing I have, then f is continuous to c. And that's it. Is that okay with everybody? Everybody get a chance to look at it? Anybody wanna ask me? Listen, one of my colleagues, when talking to, and I'm not about to say this to you, I won't. When talking to one of his students in a proof-based class, had told the students that they were gonna put two out of four particular theorems on the podcast. And the student said, well, I didn't know how to do it. And the professor said, well, what'd you do to try to learn? The student said, well, I read over. And was the professor saying, in my opinion, the right thing? He said, that's not gonna be sufficient. When I was a student, I could read over, and that wasn't good enough. What I had to do is put myself in a position of what it's gonna be like when I took the test, which here's a blank sheet of paper, that's your position. You gotta produce it all. It's like singing. He didn't say this. This is my knowledge. I use this all the time. Improving some of these things, it's like singing a song. And it's it's not as hard to sing a song when it's on the radio and you're listening to it. So, Mark, I hope I don't bother you. I know that you're in a position. But it's a lot harder just to start playing it yourself without anything around you. Just to start singing. That's a lot harder. And so on the test, you don't have anything to help guide you. So you gotta put yourself in a position and be able to do it in that situation. Okay? Reading it is not enough. And you gotta have some kind of prompts to help you, whether it be definitions or what the statement says, to at least that's what it is for me anyway. Okay, we're getting to the one Megan asked about. The last one. So here is, we want to prove the following statement. If f is continuous on A to B. Oh, I'm probably gonna ask you this. Then f is bounded on A to B. Okay, I'm gonna ask you this. There. Mark, mark on it. Start, whatever you wanna do. Yeah, I'm gonna ask you this. Heck yeah, I'm gonna ask you this once. Because if I don't ask you this, what am I gonna ask you from the part of where the material for test stipulated and what we covered at? You know?
Gotta make it interesting.
Well, I gotta include, what, why we covered? Does that make sense? So I'm gonna ask. Okay, so how do you prove? So here we let f be continuous. Uh, well, I think we gotta have, I do, I have to have a prompt. And so I'm gonna erase that right there. The prompt is this one. I gotta have something that helps get me going. And so here's what I remember. This is proved by that's right. It's a proved by continuity. Is that okay? So I remember that, and that helps. Okay, so how do I prove that my contradiction? Can you phrase it? All right. Let F be continuous. On A to B. And then I assume the opposite of what I want to show. Suppose. F is not bounded. On A to B. What does it mean to not be bounded? Well, it means that no matter what number you give me, there's something in the closed interval from A to B that's bigger than that number. So here's what we did. So no matter what number you give, there's something in, in here. So it's an F of X bigger than the number you gave. Well, that's a fact. So for each. N. That's an element of A to B. There exists. An X of N. Element from A to B. Such that. The absolute value of X of N is bigger than or equal to, well, it's bigger than. N. Bigger than, okay? N.
Why did we pick N there? Just out of curiosity.
Well, the reason we're doing this for each N produces a sequence X of N, right?
Right, I mean, why on the, on the right side?
Why did I pick N? Well, I could have picked two N or something like that, or, or any kind of listing of numbers that went off to infinity. Good, okay, so we're just, okay, but I like N cause it's simple. Cause it'll work out later, in other words. Yes, it works out very nicely when we look at the subsets. But I believe, John, we could have used anything. Any sequence of numbers here that progress towards infinity. I'd say three and minus seven.
I'm gonna do that on my test then.
Please. Okay. So we produce, you know, for each N, we get this sequence, so we have to do. A sequence. X of N. And the only thing I know about this sequence is that it's a subset of A to B. And that F of X of N is a big enough inside of the, some others. But I know what I'm gonna concentrate on, are the X of Ns are in A to B. If they're in A to B, that means that every term is between A and B, might be equal to A, might be equal to B, but they don't get outside that box. And if they don't get, if the X of Ns don't get outside that interval, that means those X of Ns are bounded. So Megan, X of Ns. Are bounded. What do I know about every bounded sequence? This guy converges to subsets. What's the name of that? Yes, that's right. Good job. Has a convergent subset. Let's say X of N sub K. So all I got is that it converges to something, okay? Uh, they converge, and so if it converges, it converges to something. Converging to. X. The next thing I wanna talk about is X. So kind of, you know, we kinda introduce things. We got this X of N sub K, and they converge. Where do they converge to? Something about X. Well, let's say something about X now. Well, look. Since the X of Ns of Ks are part of the X of Ns, and the X of Ns are in between A and B. What is the limit of the X of Ns of Ks has to be between A and B. Is that okay? So since A is less than, equal to X of Ns of K is less than or equal to B, then the limit of this guy, which is just X, has to also be between A and B. Okay, so Megan, X is something in A to B, what do I know about F on A to B? It is continuous. So since. X is an element of A to B. F is continuous. At X. Is that okay with everybody? Well, we're getting close to being done. Remember, I'm trying to do a proof by contradiction. I haven't said anything stupid yet. Something that we know is wrong. Good? F is continuous. Now, what about X of Ns of Ks? X of Ns of Ks are in the domain of F. And they converge to X. And F is continuous at X, so by the sequential criterion for. Continuity, right. That's what I'm telling you, F is continuous, isn't it? So by the sequential criterion of the document. That means that the limit as N goes to infinity, I'm sorry, as K goes to infinity of M of X sub N sub K. That has to converge to F of. What's C? There's no C up here. X. In the statement, it's C, but the role of C in our problem's been played by X. Okay. But. M of X sub N sub K. Then. That's gonna be greater than N sub K, which is greater than, uh, K. And that's true for all K element of N. So what does that tell me about the F of X of Ns of Ks? Are not bounded. That's correct. And if they're not bounded, I've seen one thing about a non-bounded sequence, it cannot. Cannot converge, but we said it converged. So now I've said something contradictory. One minute I said, hey, F of X of Ns of Ks, they converge to this F of X. Here I'm saying, hey, they're not bounded, so they cannot converge. That's a contradiction. So I made a mistake logically. I made a mistake in what I assumed. What did I assume? I assumed that F is not bounded, thus F must be bounded. Okay, I'm gonna take one minute, let you have a minute. Get everything down, think about it, ask you for your. Does anybody wanna ask you anything about that proof? Megan, is it okay? We did four proofs in about an hour and a half, something like that, but you know, that's from me talking, telling stories and not just really going after it. Look, each proof should take about twelve, thirteen minutes. So I mean, in an hour, you should get to. Whatever, I, I would pour the ice. That's what, that's the best. Hour. The next. I'd say twelve minutes, you'll be able to definition. Maybe fifteen minutes. Fifteen minutes to write down the statements. Then you got about thirty more minutes. Here's my thing for thirty more minutes. Six minutes to do the limit of the function, six minutes to do the.
Toshi.
Continuity. If I ask you a toshi one? Yeah, I don't think it's on there. Okay? Six minutes to show that a given. Given sequence converges to a, to a sequence, that's eighteen minutes. And then you're gonna have some cluster points and some separate, that's even. You got enough time to finish. Now, having said that, I wanna tell you about this last problem. Megan, this last theorem, I told you I'm gonna ask you. This is my opinion. I have done the problem enough that I know what to do. Or, I'll say this one, I've done the problem enough that I'm confident that I can figure out what to do. That's where I am. Not that I haven't memorized it enough. But when I first learned it, I had memorized. I could just write it down, and I wrote it down enough till I started making systems, I said, oh, I know what I could do. Oh, God, look, this was next. Oh, this means that. Oh, I got to the contradiction. Is that okay? But it didn't happen in, uh, you know, in five minutes. It took some time to get it. It didn't take me days. It took me an hour or so, maybe an hour and a half. But I'm gonna ask you this, so I'm asking you to spend an hour and a half or whatever it takes, come on. You can do it. Go ahead and do it, cause I'm gonna ask you this problem. Don't miss it. I'm gonna ask you this. All right, well, does anybody wanna ask me something? From anything, from the old test, to homework, from anything? Okay? And John's looking for something, anybody else have some?
Can you give me an example of a cluster point?
Sure. So example cluster point is that. So here, let me write down what the definition of cluster point is. So Adam, that's what I'm gonna use to be able to answer a question. So kinda I write it down, and then I say, wait, does this fit this definition? So. We let A be a subset of all. The number C. Is a cluster point. Okay. Here, for each. Delta greater than zero, there exists an X. I think what we wrote was there's at least one X. I'm just gonna say there exists an X. Element of A. With X being different from C. Such that. I wrote that over. Such that the distance between X and C is less than. Okay, I don't hear what it says. Hey, your cluster point is set A, here. No matter what distance is given to me, for each distance, possibly could be given to me. There's some guy in A that isn't C. But the distance that it is from C is less than the number you gave. So, uh, let's look at an example. Let's look at a set, let's let A be the set one of A. This is kind of the most basic thing that I look at quite often. Let's just say, and a lot of times I union something, let's union, let's union the three to five. And let's don't include five. Let's don't include four. Let's don't include either. Oh, I wanna include it. I wanna include five. So here's my thing. Let's look at the set visual. Here's zero. Here's one. Look, when N is one, I get out a one. When N is two, I get out a half. N is three, I get out a third, four, fifth, sixth. And this is, is a sequence that's progressing its way towards. Zero. So I mean, it keeps going, ba, 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 all the way, does that begin to zero? No, it does. None of the terms are actually zero. It gets right up next to it. And then we have three. We don't include it, it's open. Well, I'll put the parentheses. Up to five, but we didn't include five.
And everything in between.
And everything in between. Thank you, John, let's get inside that very double. Okay. So the first question is, is five. Uh, say. Okay, that means to answer this question, I said, no matter what distance they tell me to get about five. I put some, some distance about five. When I say a distance about five, I mean, it's like a string. I'm on the number line, so I can go that distance to the right and that distance to the left. No matter what distance they give me, are there gonna be values from A within that region every time? So let's say this is my delta, no matter what I give you, oh, I can make it smaller. When I get some distance about five, it includes part to the right and part to the left. Anytime I go to the left, am I gonna get something from A that's not five involved in that little region? Every time. So that means that my answer here is. Yes. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, let's talk about one. So five was in there, right? Well, let's, let's ask, is three a cluster point? So I'm gonna be quiet, Adam. What do you think? Is three a cluster point? Anytime you put any region about three, are you gonna get stuff from A? That in three?
That's in three.
That in three?
Yeah. So you give the right and sure.
Well, wait a minute, when you put a little region about it, it's gonna have left and right. So what would you say, so if you put a little region, it's gonna include to the right?
Yes.
So was that right?
That should be wrong, man.
Yes. That's right, so no matter what little region I put about three, it's gonna have some region to the right of three. If you guys reach to the right of three, you're gonna get something from. You're gonna get something from what set?
Set of three to five.
That's right. A. Okay, is that okay with everybody? Let me ask you this. Is one a cluster point? Wait a minute, first of all, five is in A and it's a cluster point. Three is not in A and it is A. So being in A or not being in A doesn't mean that you're a cluster. Well, what is one a cluster point? Is one a cluster point, man? So no matter what region that I put about one, do I have something from A that's in one? No matter what region I put about one. What do you think, Mark? No. So here, Adam, I put this little region. That's something about one, isn't it? Does it include something from A? Does it include something from A besides one? No. So, that means it is, I could, it's not true that for all the deltas I could pick. So, I picked this one.
So, if they, if you picked a very big delta.
It would include something, yeah, it would, but it's not, it's not that, it's not that there exists a delta, such that I can get something.
But you're telling that they're using.
It, no, is it for?
Each.
Each, not, not, it's for all of them.
Gotcha.
Not that there is one, it's for all of them. I mean, if I pick delta equal to twenty, I'm gonna get things from A about one. Okay, that's great, do you get one for, no matter what delta I pick, the answer is?
No.
No? So, that's something that's in A that's not a cluster point. Well, let me ask this question, I put it at the top, is two a cluster point? Here's two, it's not in A, is it a cluster point, Adam?
No.
No, there's nothing in this region from A about two, is that okay? So, look, here's some examples, I did four examples.
Four?
One, I, I did an example of something that's in A, it was a cluster point. I did something, uh, an example of something that's not in A. Okay, I'm sorry, shoot the point. Something in A that is a cluster point, something that's not in A is a cluster. I did something that's in A that's not a cluster point, I did something that's not in A that's not a cluster point. I'll do this one more. Is zero a cluster point?
Yes.
Yes, 'cause no matter what region I put around zero, it's gonna have some of them to the right, and when you go to the right, you're eventually gonna, uh, get one, there eventually, there's gonna be some points from A, from this part of A, that get within that region. Yes. That's okay with you? Is that okay with you, Adam? Okay, John, did you find which one?
I sure did.
What, did you have anyone?
Um, in the proof for the Koshy criterion for convergence.
Okay.
We talked about the other day, and I looked at this again, and I was a little confused. So, the part where we say, which we don't, we can go through the entire proof, or we can just go through this one part, I don't care. But the part where we say, if X of N minus X of N sub K, so the subsequence and the sequence itself.
Yeah.
Proving that that is less than or equal to epsilon two. Yes, that is, that is tough for me.
It's just less than epsilon over two.
Yes. So, when we talk about it being Koshy and why that allows us to say this, is what I struggle with.
Okay. Uh, let us go over, uh, kind of that main part of the theorem. So, uh, I'd like to start from a little bit earlier on.
Okay.
Adam, we okay? So, what John was asking about, is the Koshy criterion for convergence. Let me see, sorry. Since, hold on. Since the sequence of real numbers. How's it go? Convergence in order. So, I say convergence in order, if if and only if, that's right. Uh, the sequence is that's right. That's right, so if and only if.
But it's got two points.
But, part of it, Megan, is easy. It's because we've already proved it. Let X of N be a sequence. That's the set. Suppose X of N is convergent. Then, by previous fact. X of N is Koshy. If you want me to go through that, I can, but you just have to state it. Now, we have the other direction. Megan, is that okay? So, I'm, I'm cutting down on parts of these proofs, after the monotone convergence theorem and for this one. So, we won't go the other direction. So, last time when I did this, I did it kind of rapidly, it didn't, it wasn't that attached, so I'm not actually asking. In this direction, in this direction, we suppose X of N
Is Koshy.
Is Koshy. We want to show X of N is convergent. John, here, everybody else in the room, here's what stands out to me. Usually when we wanna show something that's convergent, we say, oh, we let epsilon be greater than zero be given, we need a K such that for all n greater than or equal to K, X of N minus X, what it converges to is less than epsilon. I don't know what X is. I don't have an idea of what it converges to, so I need to work on that. So, that's the first part of this direction, how we change. Well, here's what we do. So, uh, since by previous fact, since X of N as a sequence is Koshy, then by previous fact, X of N is what? Bound. That's the fact, we proved it. If X of N is bounded, then it has a the by, what told you that? That's right.
The BWT.
Alright. A non-baryral structure, X of N has a version subsequence.
X of N sub K.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
That converges to X for some real number x. Is that a okay way to say that?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Perfect.
So, that's what I write. Now, what we're gonna do is we will show X of N converges to X. So, because we had a subsequence converge, for X of N itself to converge, it's gotta converge to the same thing as the subsequence. Got it? Okay. Pretty much. So, that's my candidate, that's what I'm gonna show that X of N converges to. How do I do that? Well, we're gonna let epsilon greater than zero be given. What do I need? We need a
A.
That's right. All negative numbers. Such that for all N greater than or equal to K, X of N minus X will be less than epsilon. That's how I show X of N converges to X.
Actually, we need a J, okay?
Well, we call it whatever we want, but, but, but you're right, because I've already used K, I should call it
J.
J, that's right, no, you said the right thing. I'm looking for this J. Okay, well, here's what I notice, I want this to be less than epsilon. So, uh, note, X of N minus X is the same thing as absolute value of X of N minus any X of N sub K plus any X of N sub K, the same one, uh, minus X, they're the same, I just add it and subtract it, same thing. And then by the triangle law, this is less than, absolute value of X of N minus X of N sub K plus absolute value of X of N sub K minus X. Yes, ma'am? You know, it should, thank you very much, Megan, for your help. Yes, ma'am, it sure should. Megan, very good, John, very good. Now, look, I wanna show this thing right here is less than epsilon, but I know it's less than these things, okay? So, one way to show this is less than epsilon is show that this is less than epsilon. Well, one way to show that the sum of two things is less than epsilon is to show each one of them is less than
epsilon two.
Right, epsilon two, okay, I, I may not need to say this, but I'm gonna say it. If you wanna show something's less than one, and you can write it down as something plus something else, if you can show each one of the somethings are less than a half, this is less than a half, and this is less than a half, when you add them together, you're gonna get less than one, is that okay? So, that's the idea, so can I show each one is less than epsilon two? Okay. Okay, well, um, here, here's what I'll tell you, since X of Ns are Koshy, so where I'm gonna control the first guy, the first, uh, absolute value term, is through Koshy. Then, there exists a J sub one element in, such that for all N, um, and M, greater than or equal to J sub one, X of N minus X of N will be less than epsilon two. Here's the part where I can shift that, right here. Okay, well, I mean, it depends on if you stay with this, uh, I could go to another part, okay, but I, I'll stay with this part, okay? So, I'll go, uh, full, full details in. So, for all N greater than or equal to J sub one, so then, X of N minus X of J, so then
Okay, I see what you're doing, you're fixing M equal to
J sub one.
Okay.
Okay? So, that's the next one, too. So, as long as the, the, the guys that you're looking at, N greater than this, J sub one. So, what, uh, what we're doing is we're letting M be J sub one. Now, since the X of N sub K's converged to X, there exists a J sub two, such that, and that's a number, that's a number, such that, for all, uh, K bigger than J sub two, absolute value, X of N, uh, sub K, minus X will be less than epsilon of two. Okay, that's because it's a convergence of the subsequence. So, here's what I want to do, let us let J equal to the maximum of J sub one and J sub two. Excuse me. Then, for all N bigger than or equal to J, we have X of N minus X of J is less than epsilon of two, stop there. So, for all N bigger than or equal to J, we have I should, I think I should say it this way, so maybe this is some for clarity. Since, some proof, N sub J is bigger than, uh, J, we have absolute value, uh, we have for all N bigger than or equal to J, X of N minus X of N sub J is less than epsilon of two. Now, John, this may sound a little I, I think there's some wandering around in my proof, okay? I don't think that it's just as direct as it could be. So, I, I wanna pull back here. I don't think it's as direct as it could be, like I said, I think I wandered around a little bit. I don't think I showed you where this dash is. That's where I was working on this. Let's go back to here, so, the Koshy says this, as long as you're bigger than or equal to J sub one, and with it, J is bigger than or equal to
J sub one, so we're getting on that.
So, here, we have X of N minus X of J will be less than epsilon of two, that's where I get the result. But really, as long as the indexes are bigger than J sub one, well, look at X, uh, look at N sub J. N sub J is bigger than J, which makes it bigger than J sub one. So, X of, N sub J sub one minus X of N, where N is bigger than J, or it makes it bigger J sub one, we get this result. Is that okay? The key is just these indices being bigger than J sub one. So, if you're bigger than J, you're bigger than, bigger than or equal to J, you're bigger than or equal to J sub one. Okay, and N sub J sub one is gonna be bigger than or equal to J, which is bigger than or equal to J sub one, so that's why I get this result. Also, J, uh, or N sub J, N sub J is bigger than, uh, J, bigger than or equal to J, which, I shouldn't say bigger than, which is bigger than or equal to J sub two, we have X, uh, sub N, we have for all N, that's what I should say, we have for all N, bigger than or equal to J, X
I don't know that it's needed for this part.
I, I shouldn't even say this, we have just this, that X of N sub J minus X is less than epsilon of two, that's what I should say, straightforward. Thus, so, I am fixing a point in the subsequence, what is it? It's X of N sub J, that guy. For all N greater than or equal to J, we have absolute value of X of N minus X, that's what I want to show is less than epsilon. It is less than or equal to X is, is equal, is equal to X of N minus X of N sub J plus X of N sub J minus X, which is less than or equal to X of N minus X of N sub J plus absolute value of X of N sub J minus X, and that's by the triangle law. But, this part right here, we've just shown, is less than and this guy right here, we've shown is less than epsilon two, so we have less than epsilon over two plus epsilon of two. So we have less than epsilon over two plus epsilon over two. I, I can make a conclusionary statement. Uh-huh, so the X of Ns converge. They converge to X, so that they converge. So we've shown if it's Koshin, it converges. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, well, um, are there any other questions? We've got just a few minutes.
We have one.
Okay.
Martin? Let me ask this one where we, you give us a function and want to know if it's bounded on some neighborhood.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Do you want me to do it?
No, I haven't, it's not a good file. I can ask you about it later, but we're just a bar.
Okay. Anybody else? I'm not going to ask you to show a particular function is bounded on some neighborhood. I might ask you something about a true false question having to do with that.
Okay.
No, I'm not going to ask you. Yes, sir, John?
Um, when you say that we should be able to state name theorems and axioms.
Yes.
When you say axioms, what exactly does that entail?
The completeness property. The order property on R.
Okay, so not like the very first things we did?
Well-ordered, uh, uh, natural numbers. I think that's about it.
Okay. So in other words, basically things we stated but didn't prove?
That's right, that we said, yes, these are things that have just passed.
So the completeness property, well-ordered, natural numbers.
And the, uh, the well-ordered or natural, and the ordering property of R. That is the one, ordering property of R, was the one established.
Positive.
The positive.
So we don't need to state like all one of the?
No, I'm not going to ask you to algorithmically.
Okay.
That's why.
I'm a little confused on the boundedness here.
Okay.
The part where we say for each N in natural numbers. And then it goes to the absolute value of F of X of N is greater than N. Is that the same N as the Ns that are in natural?
Yes, for each one of them.
So they're, so?
We're saying?
It sends it to a number that's bigger than the natural number?
Than, than bigger than a particular natural number.
Okay.
So wait a second. Remember, we're assuming in this situation all the time, that X of N is not bounded. So what does that mean? That means that no matter what number you give, there's an input value. Says that F of that input value inside absolute value is bigger than the number you gave.
Okay.
So for each nat, I'll give you a natural, I'll give you a natural number. Well, there's an input value, I'm going to call it X of N. So I give you a natural number N. There's an X of N that's in the domain of the function.
A to A.
Says that, uh, F of X of N inside absolute value is bigger than. So here's a specific example, just to believe in the coin. We're saying F is not bounded. That means that three is not a bound. Three. The number three. That's a natural three. Three is not a bound. So that wasn't meaning for three not to be a bound. That means that there exists an input value, I'm going to call it X of three. Says that F of X of three inside absolute value is bigger than. But I can do that not just for three, but for each. Is that satisfying, Mark? What else? He's a good question. Don't forget, you've got a final exam study guide. It's on Blackboard.
So X of N is bounded, but F sends it to something that's not bounded?
Yeah. The sequences of F of X of Ns are not bounded.
Okay, alright.
So they can't converge, no subsequence of it. Well, a subsequence of it could converge. But because the way it's defined, it can't. You could give me an unbounded sequence, a subsequence of it, could converge, but not in this case. Anybody with anything else? Okay, why don't we call it quick stare? Thank you very much for your time, take time. Well, that's so many of you showed up, that's nice. Don't forget, what year's exam?
One, seven, eight, half a pill.
One, Z, twelve.